I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, my nation, visible, liberty, justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Do I have a motion to...
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Eric?
Yes, resignations, leaves, and absences, retirements. Grade seven, social studies, retirement at the middle school, Sharon Scott. Resignation, director of guidance at the high school, Nicola Rujo. Appointments, middle school nurse. Elaine, can you help me with the last name? Is it Zalano?
Zalano.
Zalano, excuse me. Karen Zalano. High, middle school music, William Haxt. Hixt. Middle school detention bus supervision, Darryl Roldwall. High school color guard advisor, Brittany Pecat. Pecasset. School kindergarten, long-term sub, Brittany Repoza. High school, fourth SP at the high school, Warren Carr. High school assistant girl soccer coach, Jeffrey Nagel. High school, two-fifths biology, Brett Gendron. Middle school, grade six, long-term sub, Lynn Milo.
And I'd like to thank Sharon Scott for all her hard work and welcome everyone new.
Absolutely.
To our district, thank you. Anyone else? No? Her correspondence, Mr. Eric Rhode Island, Department of Education letter.
I'll give that to Mr. Fiore.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Black. This is included. Each year, the RIDE takes our audit and performs another review. So not only is our financials reviewed by the external auditor here in town, but they go to RIDE and this letter just indicates that we're compliant with all of the rules and regulations. So I usually put this in here when they get a visit here in the school here.
And that's very good news, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much, Doug, for all that hard work. Okay. New business. Discussion policy, 735 and 740. Mrs. Herman?
Yes, I asked to have this on the agenda because at the recent open government summit that the Attorney General puts on each summer, Mrs. Polish and I and Mrs. Black were there. And they spoke about under what conditions school committees could receive public comment. And according to what we heard that day, public comment in front of school committees had to be first submitted in writing and during a public comment session and for informational purposes only. And that, of course, is very different from how we usually proceed from agenda item to agenda item and we allow public comment. So we referred to our attorney for further review. And the good news is, is that he did say that we can continue to take public comment in the manner that we do on each agenda item as they are announced. But he also recommended that we update two policies related to public comment. And those are 740 and 735. And so if it is all right with the committee, the subcommittee, policy subcommittee will do that and try to incorporate the recommendations made by our attorney and return to the full committee with those revised versions.
Is that okay with us, to refer those to the policy committee? Mr. Aluda?
So it's not tweaking what...
What we do.
What we do, it's just little, little changes. Like, we're still gonna be able to do it after each...
Okay.
So it's just little, little recommendations.
Okay. Well, one of those was like nine days before or something.
Yes, the nine days was one of the issues.
No.
Another was when...
Who knows what you want to know nine days before?
When written requests are made for addressing the board, for placement on the agenda, just that there would be a review of whether the matter was germane to school business. We didn't have that. But for instance, we wouldn't allow somebody to address the board because they had a product to sell. And so it's those sorts of tweaks that we're looking at.
Just to clean those up?
Yes.
And I'm very happy, Mr. Robinson, that was the answer, because I wouldn't want to be part of a meeting where people couldn't. If they could take their time to come out and want them to be able to speak to us, as long as it's on the agenda, if it isn't, we say we have to put it on the next agenda.
Well, no, what she was saying, what she said to us after the, because we went and talked to the AG Lisa afterwards, and what she said to us was, everyone needed to speak in an open forum at the beginning.
Yeah.
On the agenda items.
But at the beginning.
Either at the beginning or the end. And we said, well, that doesn't make any sense. If it's posted...
Right.
And she's like, well, and I was happy to see that you came back and said, no, if it's posted, it's totally proper.
Yeah. That was good news. Because it gives a flow to the meeting.
That's what I thought. So I thought it was odd that she said, no, no, they have to either be all at one, they have to be all at one time.
It was confusing to us, I have to say the least, which is why we saw it.
And also, from the town was Nancy Mallow and Linda Lassen at that. It's nice when the people go from the town to inform themselves of all those rules because they keep changing, you know? Well, she was there too at the meeting, right?
And she was also at the meeting.
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions, Vicki?
No, your response was really detailed.
Yes. Thank you very much for coming.
Mrs. Black, before you proceed, I made an error in the appointment on the Pecasset School kindergarten long-term substitute.
Oh.
You already have, you have the correct name in the packet. I read the wrong name. The person being recommended for the kindergarten long-term substitute position is Jennifer Peroni.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you need to... Because you accepted the...
We accepted the right name.
You accepted it as what was in writing, so...
That was in our...
Right, for the record, I just want to make it clear that it's Jen Peroni. It's the long-term sub, Jennifer Peroni.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. So do we need a motion to send it to the policy, or we're just gonna do it?
I think, I think your practice has been just to say...
Okay.
That it will be reviewed by the policy subcommittee.
And last time, we sent the communications and facilities, right, to you?
Yes. Which we did, we did work on today, but we don't have a diversion yet.
Of course not, it's too soon, yeah.
Bring it back to you.
Okay, thank you. The next one is discussion possible vote on OPEB contribution. Mr. Fiore?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Black. The committee recalls a few minutes ago, before the summer, we established an OPEB trust with 2016 dividend from our health insurance from the trust. And subsequent to that, the trust went on a major undertaking of cleaning out all of their members' accounts. And we had accumulated significant credit over the last 10 years or so. And the trust wanted to get their books cleaned and basically let members take their money that they had accumulated over the years. So what the, what I'm recommending we do with our dividend, it's actually an accumulation of dividends over the past 10 years, is add that to our OPEB trust that we've now established. So this is $191,000. That would be in addition to the $55,000 that we established a couple of months ago. And the OPEB trust was established, if you recall, to offset the cost of post-employment benefits, primarily health insurance for our retirees before they reach the age of 65.
I'll make a motion to approve the 1,000, 1,000, $100,091,213,85. Put aside.
Second. Do I have any question? From anyone? No. Okay, all those in favor?
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Discussion possible vote fiscal year 2016 update. Mr. Fiore?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Black. And your package is a, is a memo that kind of outlines our successful financial end to 2016. And what we've typically done when we've closed out the year is use some of our balance if it's available to put toward capital expenses that we've previously approved, in this case toward, as we went through the budget process. And that accounts for $269,675. In addition to that, there are three items I'm asking the committee to consider, to reserve for. And as I go through them, most of them we've talked about before, but I'll just reiterate what they are for the benefit of the public. The first item is similar to what we did last year. We took $250,000 from our, from our end-of-year balance and moved it into capital. We didn't specify a particular project, but these expenses can go toward offsetting some of the major expenses we have, particularly with the bonding. We know we're gonna have to contribute a portion of that, and this is one way that we can put money aside for it. So it's identical to the transaction that occurred at the end of '15. The committee, if they see fit, will vote and it will appear that way in our financial statements as a reserve part of our fund balance. The second item I'm recommending is, over the past few weeks, we've been working with consultants, particularly to make sure our Wi-Fi is up to speed with a lot of wireless devices that we've, we're purchasing and potentially that students would be bringing to the school. And what we found is the capacity of what we currently have is not sufficient to what not only potentially we would need now, but especially going forward as some of the older students are bringing multiple devices in. So what we're looking is to increase the capacity of our Wi-Fi. And we received an estimate of $250,000 from our consultants. So what I'm asking is we put a portion of our fund balance aside to reserve for the upgrades in our, in our Wi-Fi, and this would include all five buildings.
And just to speak to that, our consultant is very familiar with RIDE, has told us, and when we first talked to her, and subsequently it's been verified, that RIDE had additional money. As you recall, we use state funding to initialize the Wi-Fi's in our schools. RIDE had money left over, and we are applying for this $250,000. If we do not get it, we'd like to be able to have it in reserve so we could do the work ourselves if it came to that. So it's quite possible that that $250,000, we'll be able to get some or all of it reimbursed through RIDE, through the additional, through the additional funds that they have available for districts.
If I could expand on that a little bit. If you recall, we had two initiatives of Wi-Fi, a phase one and phase two. Phase two was mostly a lot of the common areas, non-traditional classroom-type improvements. Apparently, there's phase two funds available for RIDE. So once I get a formal quote from, from the envision, the company that performed the work on phase two, RIDE's willing to consider that a change order for phase two. And if they approve it, we'll be able to get reimbursed for those additional funds. So I was very pleased to learn that RIDE was willing to do that, but we're still in the stages of putting the quote together to apply for reimbursement.
And they could end up just doing a piece of it and not...
Right, they could do a portion of it.
Right. Because if everyone applies, then they start carving it up.
Right. The good, the good news is, we're, I think we're on the short list of the communities that would be potentially applying for this, but just to be safe, it's important that we have the upgrades at all the buildings.
Yeah, Mr. Natarion had worked hard on that, with getting all those...
Yes, this is basically a continuation of that initiative. So if I read your analysis correctly, we're, we're $900, almost a million dollars favorable. We're designating some of that money towards projects that are ongoing, which is outlined. It will leave us with 1.2 million, which is about 4 percent of our...
Yes, which is consistent with where we ended last year as well. And that, and that, and...
We definitely want the reserve to be...
From a financial perspective, 5 percent is considered inadequate reserve for most municipal fund balances.
And the, and the third item, long-awaited.
Yes, I was so pleased to see that on the list.
We did get an estimate from a contractor who's done work for us before, and it came in at about $155,000. Unfortunately, we're running out of time for this time for the summertime because we weren't able to get to it until early August. But the, probably the estimate came in at $160,000 to do the middle school parking lot from Quintell Drive, that area that the town did.
Town did, yeah.
And as you're looking, kind of looking at the middle school as you're pulling in, the entire parking lot to the right, nothing will be done with the roundabout.
Yeah.
But just from, from Quintell to the football fields would all be torn up.
All the way back to the...
Resurfaced, all the way back. Wherever there's pavement, all that would be pulled out. And the, the estimate was, that we got was 100, I want to say 156,000, so...
And how much gets dug up? Because I remember hearing that you just...
The whole thing comes out.
You just put on the tap coat and that doesn't last.
This isn't resurfaced, this is the whole...
Not resurfaced, good.
No, this is the whole thing.
It's the long-term fix.
It's the long-term fix.
Thank you.
Everything would come out. We're not patching it. We're not sealing the whole, you know, the cracks. It gets ripped out and resurfaced.
And about how long does that last for?
I'd have, we'd have to ask when we do the work. I would assume 10, 20 years. I mean, it would last a long time.
And so we can anticipate spending that money. We're not necessarily strictly just...
No, these are just three areas that we, well, for example, next spring, I'll be coming to the committee saying, I want to go out to bid for the parking lot. And I'll say, recall, if you recall back in August...
We reserve it.
We reserve the money, and there it is. So, and it's the same with the Wi-Fi. And the capital we've been doing for the last three or four years, this would go towards other items that are in the, in our facilities plan.
Another point, a point I didn't put in the memo was, the five-year plan did include parking lots, so we will get partial reimbursement for that. Of course, that goes to the town, but...
Yes, it's in the plan, so you do get 30, you know, 30, 33 percent or 35 percent of it.
It's becoming a safety issue, I think.
So that's potentially $50,000 that the town would get.
Yes. And again, because... Again, because we, we submitted the plan for RIDE approval, all the things we do now, the town gets reimbursed, you know, for that 35 percent. And if it's a, you know, if it's for heating or energy efficiencies, it's 39 percent.
I mean, in some respects, it was good to not lay out the starting capital before we had RIDE approval, now that the capital is...
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, we get the reimbursement.
Yes, please.
I'll move that we, that we can put funds as documented on Mr. Fiore.
Second. Any questions? From anybody? No? Yep? All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you. Newport County Prevention Coalition, Rebecca Elwell, discussion possible vote.
So you want this, I guess, so signed by the chair, or the chair and the superintendent, or how do you... Okay. Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the letter of support signed by Madam Chair.
Any questions on that one? From anybody? No? All those in favor? Thank you, Rebecca. A smiling on success, Mrs. Waddell? Oh, that's nice.
Great.
That's wonderful.
One links a T-shirt.
Oh, that's wonderful. Oh, wow, that would be nice.
Second.
Any questions? Deb, you look like you have a question?
No.
She just wants a medal.
That's wonderful.
I want the shirt.
That's wonderful, that, thank you so much. All those in favor?
You gotta run the hills a lot and have to get the medal.
That's right.
Lot of hill work.
Our own heartbreak hill.
I hardly got back from the parade on that one. Discussion possible vote, recent, I mean, no notices, Mr. Eric?
Yes, as a result of one of our teachers' retirements at the middle school, we have a two-fifths opening at the middle school for a social studies position. And I'm asking that we recall Paul Brol to that position.
I'll make a motion to approve that recall.
A second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. That's good news for that. A discussion possible vote, communication lead position, Mr. Eric?
Yes, as we, if you recall, when we talked about the communications plan at our last meeting, one of the key components of the plan was for the district to hire a, what we called, the committee called, a communications lead. The person would be responsible for overseeing all of our communications to our Facebook page, which we have yet to start, and to our Twitter account, which we will start up as soon as we advertise for this position, if the committee chooses to pursue, move forward with it. And I gave a brief overview, and these seven items come out of the communications plan itself. So I'm not gonna read all seven to you because you have them in front of you, but it gives you an overview of what the person would be responsible for. The position, I'm recommending it to be a part-time position between 15 and 17 and a half hours a week. It'll be on an as-needed basis, so sometimes the person may work all 17 and a half hours. They may work three hours, depending on what the need of the district is.
And you said it's year-round, Mr. Eric?
And we, we're a year-round business, so we would need the person, you know, to be available for us, you know, on a year-round basis. And I recommend it to 25 hours an hour, because that's what we pay, that's our curriculum rate for our teachers, and we ask them to do work outside of the school. And this is a brand-new position, so I'm putting it up here for your review. I mean, we can tweak it and do whatever you'd like, but...
What kind of qualifications are you asking for? What were you thinking?
It would be someone would have to be extremely, you know, obviously familiar with, you know, the various social media platforms. Hopefully, again, we'd have to put it in the job description, you know, have some work, you know, experience, either having kids in school or, you know, used to work in a school, have experience working in the public sector and in public relations, and that kind of person would...
Like, are you gonna, bachelors or not necessarily, or...
I, I think it's more the, the skill set that they bring to us.
The skill set that they come in with.
I mean, if they have one, that's great, but I don't think that...
But sort of, right, prior experience running sort of communication, PR...
Right, and, and being able to prove command of the various platforms.
Yep.
Even though we're only gonna be using initially Facebook and Twitter, you know, what, how familiar are they with the other various platforms that are out there? Because again, we would like to snapshot Instagram, all those other platforms which the subcommittee talked about. And eventually, we may move that way, but we initially want a just Facebook page and a Twitter account. And again, it would be information-only going out. It would not be interactive, either the Twitter account or the Facebook page. It's really just information for people. Okay, you use Twitter, here's our feed. You use Facebook, here's our feed.
Could I have a motion? A second, and then we'll discuss it.
I make a motion to approve the creation of a new communication lead position for the district.
Do I have a second? Okay, discussion?
It was, when we put that in there, it was for everyone in the district. In other words, here's the protocols that, if you want something on, put on the Facebook district's webpage, you need to do ABC. I'm sure it's just three or four things in order, if that, you know, send it to me. I need it in this kind of format. If you have pictures, please, you know, it'll be very simple format. But right now, we don't have any, because this is a new position. We have to create protocols to be able to get that information from our principals, also from our PTOs, from our boosters, all our organizations within our district to be able to channel that information through the communications position. I will turn, I, I know Amy can answer that.
Right, she shows her, uh, which, uh, website that we have, just they have, uh, two, three, four, uh, two, three, four, uh, jobs. Uh, well, one of the houses, uh, is, uh, phase, uh, seven levels. And I think, uh, the challenge is not necessarily being able to, uh, to the calendar. It's more about, uh, communication, uh, what we planned, uh, about staying within brand, uh, about brand, which we communicate with the owners. Dance at Seven. That's one thing, but, um, how we have to express, you know, using, uh, dance and nature and love to it, uh, and make this style and those kinds of things. So, I, I don't know, but, uh, if I was, uh, if I had to, uh, write this down, it's-
Well, just say, without knowing this is the, uh, this is, is what is possible, that we call the stage. So, if they're able to give staged content on a stage, so then if you put URL, it's on live.
Yes.
As a, this is what we're gonna post enough, take a look. If everyone says, okay, we can publish it, it goes into the production site, live site. So, that has a ability, you know, make it to live.
Yes. One of the main, uh, maybe, uh, I think, uh, we need to discuss with, uh, is press releases most benefits initially, maybe?
Yeah.
And that piece as well, and, uh, maybe, uh, uh, this.
So, writing skills obviously will be strong, you know, written, and, you know, can they write will be something that will require, you know-
So, bachelor's in English?
It would certainly be beneficial. Or library media, right Carol?
Is the thinking, like, uh, like, outside the district not, I, being not a current employee? Like, what?
We talked, again, this, and there's some members of the subcommittee that are here, so-
Oh, okay.
Our intent, I, I don't believe people, if you're working a job here, you have the time to be checking in with everybody you gotta check in with. Maybe you can.
On top of that?
I, I don't know. I, we couldn't do it. Al had trouble keeping up with it, uh, the website and as a stipend in position.
And doing his own job.
And that was just, and doing his job. And, you know, and that's not, you know, that's just the nature. He was so busy, then he had these other things. So, that's why our website wasn't where, you know, where we wanted it, because we couldn't dedicate the hours with the people to it, because we were paying a small stipend, uh, for that. So, we're trying to professionalize our communications, you know, district-wide, so-
So, with that said, this should be your business, always, this person's just like, oh, right.
And, uh, well, primarily, yes, because that's when, that's when we're here. But also, if something came up where I needed, you know, school canceled.
Yes.
Or, uh, something occurred where we gotta contact just a school, you know, a staff at a school. But primarily during the school day, yes. A lot of it would be going on then, because you need to, you, ideally, it would be, I envision the person would check in with me, check in with Doug, Amy, the principals, uh, our E D, you know, a whole litany of people. You check in, do you have something for me to put up? Or during the day, uh, the PTO may send, uh, Deanne something at Picasa that we wanna go up. So, here's how you do it. So, alls Deanne has to do is forward it to this person, and then they get it out there for us.
But you could have a scenario, like you said, school cancellation, or maybe, uh, an athletic bus broke down or something.
Yeah.
You wanna get something out on Twitter or basically?
Right away. So, that's why I said it's, um, on an as, as-needed basis. But primarily, and we could put that when we do the job, that it's primarily during school hours. Because Al had to do his, when, what we did have learned was Al was working on it when we weren't, we weren't, not that we weren't in communication with him, but it's hard when people aren't at, at work, and you're trying to work on something you have questions or you need clarification on. So, I think it would be more beneficial to, more effective to have it during the school hours.
So, during the school hours, but-
Does anyone have any questions? Anyone from the committee?
And again, we're gonna be mon, I'm sorry, so, we're gonna be, this is new to us. So, we're gonna have to probably tweak it along the way and find our way as to how we operate, you know, with this position. But it was really something that the subcommittee thought we needed to help, uh, improve communication, both internally and externally.
And maybe have the subcommittee in four months, five months, come back and say, hey, how are we doing?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we agreed, uh, and again, because, like, it went into the summer and it was hard for everybody to meet. But for those of us that stuck it out, right Carol? For those of us that were able to meet, we agreed, and I think we agreed earlier, that we would check in every six months anyway, to see where we are with the plan and how it's going, and then make recommendations back to the committee of the school.
So, one thing I think is that we're not gonna be able to accomplish this by stipends or by carving out or, or adding responsibilities to, or, you know, existing portfolios, qualification or responsibilities. Unless we sort of put something away from them. You know, we're gonna be back to the same-
Problem.
-question or problem of creating a position. This looks like it's about twenty-two, twenty-four thousand dollars a year.
Yes.
Uh, so, can you change?
If you maxed it out, right?
Something that we could weather, you know, even given current, uh, fiscal issues. And this is a discrete carve-out of what the budget, of what, what the communications committee was sort of going after. I think in the long run, vote, because we're gonna probably want someone with a little bit more expertise, but also, there are so many other things we really need to do, not just want to do. We're gonna, I, I would see this probably being augmented or other things being carved out of that plan. And, and, you know, and, you know, maybe this would be good for some straight out of college who's putting things together, or someone who's, like, home with kids and is looking to do something, you know, some period of time. It's not huge money, so I, I don't know if it's, it's huge money.
But the point was to have a dedicated-
But, but a dedicated person who's gonna have, you know, not be doing this on the fly. That's not gonna work, um, or even not just stipend, I think. So, this is, I think, a very reasonable approach that's not gonna sink us by, you know, having some-
And it sounds like their responsibilities will grow and change as the need-
As we evolve, but again, that's, we, I just limited it to what we put in the plan.
Yep.
And again, as we, as it grows, or as we get used to it, it will probably evolve.
If we can do Twitter, Facebook, and a website effectively, you know?
Yeah.
That's, that's a win.
That's huge, yeah.
And we can build up.
Any questions? Will I add anything? No? Jim?
That's a good start, because limiting the number of hours upfront, even though that's actually very limited amount. And I think, you know, you see those used up pretty quickly. At some point, it's the meat fluctuations, not if it's fully, it's gonna be more than-
Right, you'd be busy again. And that's, and we keep it under the hours. Part of it is cost, but also, we also have the healthcare, you know, the Obamacare issue.
So, there's no benefits, yeah.
If they work, you know, more than twenty hours.
Well, it's also a good trial to see, Eric, do we have, do we have enough work?
Right, and if there is, right, and if there is, we'll come back and we'll say, you know, we'll have a, well, we'll, we'll hire somebody, you know, within the next month, get it up and running, and then, who knows? Maybe we will, you know, we'll say, hey, it's not enough, or maybe, you know, we just don't go to that number that we have here, so-
And you're gonna advertise this?
That's what I'm asking permission for, so we can advertise for the, the position, and hopefully get somebody across our fingers, hopefully by our next meeting. If not, certainly the second meeting in September.
Okay, and all those in favor? Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion possible vote, high school late bus?
Uh, as you recall, last year, um, we did a survey, uh, of our eighth grade parents and our high school parents to see if they would, there was interest in having after-school transportation for our students. Um, the majority of people who responded to our survey, as you recall, uh, said they would be in favor of that, uh, after-school transportation if we offered it. In light of, uh, our financial, uh, situation that we ended so favorably this year, I'm asking the committee if they would like to consider running the late buses, uh, at the high school. It would be similar, uh, to the middle school run. We would have, uh, three buses here at the high school, three days a week, um, Tuesday through Thursday. And, uh, it would mirror, again, it would be similar to what we offer at the high school and see how that operates for a year.
And, and see if it really is used, if the interest is there.
And see if it, you know, it's one thing, you know, we're surveying the parents, they said, yes, we'd like this service. I, I think, uh, as, looking at it as a one-year trial, let's see how it goes. And we'll know by December, you know, when we start the budget up, whether or not it's being used or not. So, we'll, we'll either, we'll wire the bacon into the budget, uh, as an ongoing cost, or we just, we'll just say, you know, we didn't have enough ridership and-
But now it's from the fund balance.
But right now, it would be come out of the, be a one-off for us.
So, how will we know that actually?
Well, we, I'll work with, uh, Chris, uh, at the high school. I'll have him monitor it. We'll also talk to the bus company. They know how many kids ride. So, it's easy to say, okay, we have, like, five kids every day on bus one, seven on bus two, three on bus three. Would they track? You can get a general idea how many kids take it. When we used to have it, you could just, you'd just see them go to it, just to a quick count.
So, I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, institute late buses at the high school for the sixteen, seventeen school year.
Second. Any questions from anyone?
Just one last. So, what would, what would you consider, you know, adequate use?
I would say if, if we were running between anywhere around twenty to thirty kids a day, if we were running that, I'd say that's a pretty decent, you know, just based on the fact we have five hundred and sixty kids here. Half of them can drive or get a ride. You know, you're really looking at the younger kids, the sophomore and freshman, or the, uh, junior, senior doesn't have, uh, transportation. So, I'd say between twenty and thirty.
How many kids ride at the middle school, do we know? So, we just, lots?
Lori, do you?
Any, I got it?
Oh, okay. So, a lot, a lot of kids, okay.
Yeah, there were a lot of kids, and I kept, uh, uh, this, uh, every day.
Let's put that, bring it in. Super. Okay, I hope that continues, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, because they do, they are familiar and parents are familiar with it, you know, and if you do approve it, we'll have Chris send out some to the parents at the high school, letting them know that we're, we'll be running them this year.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, advanced placement results, Mr. Eric?
Yeah. Who's got the, this is like being at home. Who has the remote? Oh, Mrs. Riley has the remote. All right, let me, it's not participating. Oh, there we go. Um, we got our results, uh, earlier this year, last year. They were delayed a little bit, and we didn't report them until January. Uh, this year, they were back, uh, on target. Again, this is, uh, pretty standard, the data that we're looking at. I'd like to look at a five-year window, uh, for cohort comparisons. Last year was twenty-eleven to twenty-sixteen. This year, it's twenty-twelve, uh, was twenty-eleven to fifteen. This year, it's twenty-twelve to sixteen. Uh, each graph contains, uh, our students' results, uh, on both the state level and also on the global average. And, let me see. Okay. That goes backwards, but it won't go forward. Let's try it again. Apologize, but it's not. Add it to the list. I don't know.
That's all right, we have, we have the crowd.
Okay, I can read it, I apologize. Uh, for those, because it's not-
Just have to read it.
Here we go. Oops, there it was. All right, forty-five students took seventy-five AP exams in studio art, calculus, biochem, English language composition, English lit composition, psychology, Spanish, and U.S. history. Sixty-six percent of our students scored a three or plus, three or higher. The average overall was sixty-two percent, while the global was sixty. And again, I still use three, because colleges do accept a three. However, more and more colleges, because it's becoming more and more competitive, it's now, a lot of schools look at fours. But I still use the three, because it's still a accepted number. Okay, Amy, can you change my slide there from there? There we go. For APR, uh, again, last, in twenty-fifteen, we didn't have any students, uh, take the exam. That's why you see twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, fourteen, and there's no fifteen. This year, nine students, uh, took it, and all nine, uh, received a three or higher. In biology, um, fifty percent of our students, uh, received a three or more. Again, you can see this, the Rhode Island and global averages. And again, last year, we were nine for nine, so we were, or nine out of ten. So, we were at ninety percent. And last year was an exceptional year. And you can see, even though we didn't, went down, uh, we are still higher than we were in fourteen, as far as results. Uh, eight students took the exam, uh, four received a three or higher. Uh, calculus is still an area where we struggle, although it doubled, uh, to twenty-two percent this year. Unfortunately, it is still well below the Rhode Island and, uh, global averages. And we are taking steps, uh, towards, uh, again, working on that area, that content area. Calculus, nine students took it and two passed it. In chemistry, um, we did very well, um, the previous two years. We had zero students pass it. This year, we had forty-three percent. State average was forty, while the global average was fifty-four. So, we saw significant gains, uh, in chemistry. And again, this is the second year, I believe it's the third, is it the third year we're teaching it now, or the second year? I wanna say it's our third year now. This was our third year, so we're starting to see the results. It does take a few years for teachers to get the hang of the curriculum and be successful in teaching it. Uh, AP, uh, English language, uh, composition, hundred percent of our students passed it. You can see where the Rhode Island scores were in global. Normally, we have, this was an exceptionally low cohort, small cohort. Usually, we have, you know, teens, but for whatever reason, only five, we only had five this year.
It did surprise me, um, because I know, the, at one point, we even had two classes.
Right.
And I wondered if it was because of the EEP option now, that early-
It could be.
That students are opting to take English through the EEP, where you're, I think, pretty much guaranteed to get, uh-
You get the credit.
-credit, no matter where you go to college, whereas more and more colleges are opting not to give students credit toward graduation for AP scores.
And that's something we can, Chris can certainly look into. I, I, I know that the EEP class is very popular, and we have good, good numbers.
I wonder how colleges view it, if they still, if, uh, consider the AP class the more demanding class, and therefore, in terms of admission, would prefer to see students taking multiple AP as opposed to multiple EEP classes.
I think the E, I, I think it depends on the college and the universe. Having just gone through the process, haha, with my own child, um, the AP courses are still, uh, highly valued, by, uh, at least the colleges that, that we were looking at. And again, if you're a state school, you take the EEP, you, you get credit for it. And again, if you go into an out, out-of-state school, I believe that would be determined by the school itself, so they might give you credit or not.
Mine got credit for all his EEPs.
Yeah, yeah, so, I, again, I think it's becoming, as Carol said, a more accepted practice.
I mean, he got credit for his AP too, but he did the EEP.
Yeah, and the lit, and the comp, uh, again, we, we're, we do, uh, historically well, uh, again, in this content area. Uh, these are the numbers that we're used to seeing, thirteen students took the exam, ten, uh, received a, a three or higher. And again, I'd rather see numbers like this than thirty to fifty kids, because I believe that means too many students are taking it and might not be ready to take it. Again, the, the working numbers, around ten percent of your, your graduating class should be in your AP classes, the, more or less. So, this would be more reflective of, of the, the numbers you look at for versus, in some years, we had, as Carol mentioned, two sections of, of classes. Uh, AP psych went up significantly this year, uh, even though we're below, slightly below the state average and the global average. Uh, we increased significantly. And I apologize for the, uh, thousand percent. And that was just wishful thinking, I guess. Not my part.
Left your figure on the zero a little too long.
Someday, someday, we'll get to thousand percent. But, uh, AP psych, again, we, uh, saw a significant increase from last year.
Although we've sort of been up and down.
Yes, it's been an up and down. And again, if you look, if we went back and looked at those scores, some of them are numbers, you know, you have that-
If you have three students taking the-
Right, you have either a very low number, or you have a high number of students. And again, in a school our size, we shouldn't be having twenty, thirty kids, you know, taking an AP. taking an AP, that are truly ready for the rigor that's in, in an AP course. And you can see, we, uh, was eleven and six. AP Spanish, uh, we dipped a little, because for three years in a row, we were at seven hundred percent, so we're gonna have to [laugh] get back on the stick there, but, you know, historically, again, our students do extremely well. Uh, again, this is, this is, again, the number.
Right.
Only four took it.
So.
So, you know, three out of four, so it's seventy-five percent, so.
How representative is the number of students taking it versus the number of kids in the class?
They're required now to-
Are they required to take it now?
Now, they're required to take it.
They have to take the test, right? Yes, we did that when you had us here.
And the last one is, uh, United States history, where, uh, a teacher who taught it the year before, you can see the increase from fourteen to fifteen, uh, when, when on maternity leave, uh, this year, so the students didn't have, uh, the teacher who was trained in it, um, so, uh, the teacher's coming back this year, so, uh, we should see the numbers get back to where they were in fifteen, or, and again, he, three out of eight. And those are the, the assessments, Chris, uh, has looked at the data, he'll be, in matter of fact, he has a meeting tomorrow with the department heads, uh, not only to introduce himself to his, uh, leadership team, but also to set, uh, goals for the, uh, team for the upcoming school year.
So when we're scheduling, do we look at, I'm assuming we do, like if, English, you have less kids taking the AEP, AP, because more kids are taking the EEP, do we, at some point, discuss maybe not offering the AP?
Historically, the, the answer, we have not had that discussion yet. Historically, we are willing, we have always, as you can see by the numbers, taken, run five or six, or less than ten, for our AP classes, because we value them. Other districts say you have to have ten, otherwise we don't run it.
Well, we're small, so you have a smaller number.
Right, but I'll speak, uh, my own experience, my daughter didn't get to have French four, because there weren't enough kids in her senior year to take it, even though it was a, we thought it was the most important thing for us, but, you know, the district couldn't run it, so we've always held on to that, like we've held on to our career Ed, you know, we've held on to that, and maybe sacrificed elsewhere, but we haven't had that conversation.
And I'm not thinking more like AP versus not having anything, I'm thinking more when kids are sort of naturally gravitating to the EEP classes.
Yeah, if we, if it came to the point where we had, um-
Especially if we're finding that colleges are more, as likely, or getting to be more likely to accept credit for those versus-
Yeah, yeah, that's probably a conversation that we can, we can have, that's, uh, we may have to have at some point, because our numbers aren't, you know, we are plateaued at our numbers, we had to make some cuts, as you know.
And I'm sure that's just talking to the parents and the kids and sort of seeing-
Right, and, you know, and if that's the case, it's possible we could have that-
Or guidance, or guidance, yeah.
You know, guidance certainly would-
What can we do to-
We could get their input and see, you know, I'm sure Chris can meet with them and have those conversations, and if we get to that point, we'll bring it to the committee and, you know, we'll, we'll talk about how to proceed with it, you know, down the line.
You don't need to vote on that, right?
No, that's just information.
Now we-
So in two thousand and fourteen, our park visits rates were hundred percent.
Here we go, we had an anomaly.
We, we know, you know, we have any advice, or we don't have any?
Kids.
What was the number?
I'd have to look at, I don't have it, I don't have it with me, but-
Otherwise, we're sort of in a hole with park visits.
Right, and we're, it's, it's been a challenge for us, and we're taking some steps where I think we'll see, we saw a slight improvement this year, and I think it's gonna be a gradual-
I, I wanna say it was, there weren't that many kids to begin with, so it's like they took both past, or that kind of a deal.
Yeah, I wanna, I-
It's gonna be very misleading because they're so small.
Right, but, right, but it's just, I just throw it up there so everyone can see, you know, what we're talking about, because numbers can be misleading, but you still wanna see, again, ideally, you see where the state averages are, you wanna be, obviously, at least there, if not higher, in, in all your content areas, so, you know, that's what we strive for.
We'd have to feel down to see how many kids know.
I wanna say it was probably, it was the students, because they're the ones that take it, and if you get a gifted cohort-
I was gonna say, I see for colleges, a small class to begin with, and then, they just, they all did very well in math, and-
And so they, they matched the Rhode Island pass rate of fifty-seven percent or sixty percent, it's like, they were at sixty percent pass in two thousand and fourteen. Yeah. And that's the best we've, we've done on calculus.
And again, that's why we also, um, as you recall, we recommended to the committee, our students can sign up for courses, advanced courses in other areas, not just calculus, but if it's part of that network, uh, that RIDE established last year, students can sign up and take, they may not offer something, they can sign up for it. And we also, uh, have our, our online program, so if there's an AP class that students, that we don't offer, uh, there are other avenues they can take.
Right, we've expanded.
Mm-hmm. We're virtual high school and-
Advanced Course Network, we signed up for that, it's very exciting.
Was it correct, was it the taking, uh, certain algebra?
Under, we, we make recommendations, but under RIDE's direction, all students have what's called access and opportunity to courses, they can take, a student can take anything.
So I think maybe a good way to look at, look their algebra scores and take, calculus basically is advanced algebra. So if they have strong algebra skills, fundamentals already, that would-
Right, and, and some, and, but, and some may, again, because calculus would be advanced fourth, fourth year math, as you know, a lot of kids, while they have to do four years of math, after three, they'll, they'll take something else, you know, probability and stats, or something like that, they won't go into calculus, so that's certainly-
But only two a year would be algebra, probably the freshmen would be able to-
Right, but that's also an area where we're looking to improve on, because we, with our park results, so you're right, there is a correlation there, but we have to work on the foundation first, and then, hopefully, we'll see improvement there.
And then they need you for two to Jim, like James did.
We can't afford them.
My, my son went to James, went to Jim. Okay, um, discussion possible votes, staff and kindergarten grade one?
Yes, um, we talked about this at our last meeting, and, uh, the numbers, uh, in first grade, we are currently at capacity, you know, and if no new students moved in, we'd be able to, to get by. Uh, but I have, as of this afternoon, I have four students scheduled, or parents of four students scheduled to come in to enroll in first grade this week.
Is that with the waiting for placement number?
Yes.
Now it's four?
Now it's four, and I confirmed that, uh, late this afternoon, so that will put us well over the, uh, the cap.
Which is what?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three to start the year, yeah.
So you've got two twenty-threes, two twenty-threes, and then Ranger, obviously, is already over.
Right, and, uh, I'm asking permission for the committee to, uh, if these four students register, to open up the first grade at Ranger School, because that's where we have the available classrooms.
So we'd have three at Ranger?
We'd have a bubble first grade at Ranger. And also, uh, I would like permission, if needed, if our K's spike between now and our next meeting, even though we have six available seats right now, um, I have three waiting to enter, so that gives me three seats. Um, if everything held the way we're looking at it, would, you know, the, what we're looking at right now would be okay, but we still see fluctuations into the first two weeks in the school year, so I'd like to be able to have that, um, ability to open up that K section if need be, if the numbers, uh, warranted in between now and the next time we meet.
What, what's our cap at three and four?
Three and four is, uh, twenty-five.
Twenty-five? Okay. Forty-seven.
And Fort Barton has the bubble class, they have three fourth grades.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve adding a third first grade class at Ranger, and if necessary, to add an additional kindergarten class, and where would that-
Advocacy.
Advocacy.
Neither's budgeted, and this is, again, this is why, when we talk about, why do you need a, a fund balance?
So this is where this is, that's my question.
This is, it gives us the ability-
I'm sorry, I'll second the motion.
And now, obviously, assume, I'm sorry, assuming the, the numbers stay, we have to put it into the budget for next year, but that's, you know, critics who say, what do you need a fund balance for, this is why, it's an unforeseen cost.
Finding out, obviously, we need some regulatory flexibility.
Right, you know, three days before school, a week, you know, a week before school.
Do you have any questions? Questions from anybody?
Step, what, what do you budget, like five, or you, I mean, I know-
I'm sorry.
So a step, you, what, the budgeting process, you'd say five, and then if it-
We, statues five, you're looking, uh, probably average around seventy thousand total.
Thanks. Any other questions?
For each position.
Yeah.
Just to make a quick request.
That's good. Oh, yeah, look at that.
Graduation may last more than an hour.
Oh, no.
So many kids.
That's nice to see.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any reports or announcements from anybody? Dave?
Just, uh, I'm sorry, Dave, go ahead.
Just to let you know that we played, we, this week, a lot of potential, uh, for, I think it's a great idea, if they're all over there, and it's something that would be a, that call, it would be short, um, September is, uh, national, uh, potential today, so, uh, so what they're doing, uh, for, and eleven schools, they sent out this, this letter to all the assistant partner, uh, quite a lot of schools, I think they never do this, those eleven schools, I think the school you wanna go with, from seven and one until seven, and as it hits you up, plus, the high five, we, it's a great idea, and I think it's a great idea, and I think it's something, I think it's, I think it's very short, if you wanna do this, and all of that, it's, uh, all it takes is, we get a couple of council, we get a couple of citizens, we go, we go, uh, we're supposed to, this is, this is-
Well, we, we, we can't really take any kind of-
We can't vote on it, no.
No, no. Because it's not on the agenda.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. It's a great idea, Dave, believe me, really, very good.
Another, uh-
But, Dave, you could talk to the superintendent.
That's right, you could talk to the superintendent.
Could you talk to the superintendent?
You could, that's right, good.
Why don't you do that?
Because we can't, we can't take an official position, but if you wanna leave us the information, that'd be super.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
I'll give you an official high five.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Just under announcements, before Kelly gets up, um, fifth and sixth grade recess, uh, state statutes as, uh, a new law, that we need to have recess in grades five and six.
Yes.
Mrs. Dias Mitchell and I are still working with the union on coming up with a final plan, and we will have something for parents, we'll let them know as soon as we get it finalized, we're getting close, but we're, we're still working out the particulars.
But do you anticipate offering twenty minutes of recess from day one on?
Yes, we have to.
Okay.
It was just a statement, just an announcement that we worked on.
He's gonna bring it to us, yeah, he's gonna bring it back to us, okay, Kelly?
We do, uh, I have our unofficial idea, um, can we just say that, 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 that we saw this hard last year?
You again can talk to Bill.
Yeah, you can call it.
And discuss whatever you'd like with Bill.
Call him?
Discuss.
That's right, okay, very good. And on the next agenda, Elaine, I'd like to put it on, Attorney General, we're gonna contact him about the texting, they'll send someone to the school to talk to the kids. Okay, so we'll put that on the next agenda. Thank you, anybody else? No, okay, Carol?
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to, uh, obtain legal advice under SS four-two dash four-six dash five-eight-two, and to discuss school safety under SS four-two dash four-six dash five-eight-three.
Oh, was it okay? Oh, was it okay, yes, yes, yes.